Like to open the. Being seven o'clock, I'd like to open the child complaint board meeting for May third, twenty twenty three. First up, we have a public hearing to amend the zoning by law village district regulations two hundred dash five point one seven C. The destination amenities number two relating to sidewalks in the current zoning by law. Uh pursuant to master law chapter forty eight section five, the child complaint board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May third, twenty twenty three at seven. P M and the planning board office in the George C. The country building here is seven main street, child and mass and by zoom one. Proposal to remember children's own by law build district regulations, section two hundred dash five point one seven C. The destination amenities to relating to sidewalks in the current zoning by law, the complete text of the proposals available. Board office and town clerk's office with public inspection during regular business hours, any person interested or wishing to be on the zoning proposal should. Here the time and place designated video participation. H T T P F phone access back to zoom dot U S to access two one one two nine three two two five seven. Meeting ID two one one two nine three two two five seven phone access one six four six five five eight eight six five six. We've had a packet. This article nineteen, I believe, that's going to be on the meeting coming up.
You're saying Danny, you go refill review with the intent here is. Uh I mean, the sidewalk areas, these are the properties in the village. Uh district and. Sometimes um based on where the property is located, the size of streets located on. Right now, the by law say that if you have a property that if you're going to, you know, improve the property. That you gotta put in sidewalk, but there's certain times that wow that public safety bill control level safety bill was a perfect example. I'm on Sonic Hill Road that even though there was a continuous sidewalk on one side of the road. The uh they were required to put a sidewalk in front of a public safety bit building on the opposite side of the road. Which was just the lens of the property, it is a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere. So um. That's one target change in the by law is that um a property in the village district. Depending on the location of property, which equating will have the authority to approve or not approve. To special permanent process is can uh. We push the payment in. Lou actually install on the sidewalk, which would be put into an account that would be used for sidewalks improvement somewhere else where it would be more appropriate. The second part of the by law is right now, the sidewalks are required to be on the properties in question. It's on sometimes like particularly on North Main speed, if you. Um it might be north probably dead beside what within the town right away, first you back onto the property so that. Um because if you have one person that does it within the town right away, then somebody else does it within their property, you're gonna get like kind of zigzagged so. Intent is that the sidewalks be built in this. Within the town, by the way, meeting certain responders so that we'd have a more appropriate sidewalk. You know, where uh it will be required, but. The um the big one too is that. We won't require for all properties if we give the planning, if somebody come to the planning board. If they don't feel that sidewalk in front of their property is appropriate because. It may be on the other side of the street, it may be at a location where. A sidewalk just isn't appropriate because there's nothing around it, because it's in that district, it would be required. So this by law, the amendment is basically to upgrade. The update to zoning by law for sidewalks in the village district so that. He is the town and property of which more leeway on what would be more appropriate for any given property. As far as where the sidewalk can go and how it is built.
Okay, buddy. Love you too.
On my side. And that part of that. I don't know, based on the location of the property.
Any questions from?
So basically, we're the we're looking for a recommendation from the board. To support this by law amendment, they will be going to chat meeting in May. Do you recommend or don't recommend the amendment to the by law?
The chair. How how would a payment in lieu of the sidewalk be constructed?
Um they will have uh the town would have to establish a policy that is probably. Um probably the simplest way is going to be based on living your feet. And, you know, coming up with an appropriate number to look for it, right? That's that we, you know, going back and forth and discussing it, probably the linear feet. Uh method will be the simplest way to do it, and then we'll be. Fair to everyone that they're paying the same amount, this is based on how much furniture that particular property has.
Does the town have a special sidewalk fund today?
No, there'll be establishing one for this purpose.
Like with its own G L account, a real fund?
Right, it was that the whole intention is. The money will go into his account and only be used for sidewalk improvement, not for.
Yeah, which could be used in any part of the town, any sidewalk.
Well, yeah, but it's it's specifically for sidewalk, yes, it may not be in the village district.
Right, it could be elsewhere.
Right.
All right.
The chair. Go right ahead. I'm all about getting them up. By their owners and pushing them to public play as they should be. Both towns have them in the public play, so.
Yeah.
And if you look at a lot of the other towns, you see towns with the improvement that the. The streets, the complete street programs. There are sidewalks on the sides when we do the road, there's a granite curb and a sidewalk connection. And the traditional width of the road may shrink a little bit. But as long as the travel lanes are adherents to standards. And you have this nice sidewalk on the side and and it makes it especially downtown where we want people to walk around. It makes it a little bit vulnerable for everybody to walk around.
Right.
We have talked about the seniors walking. See the poor guy who got this discussion, there's a nice sidewalk. Um my my only question about blue of. The sidewalk is not currently at the location like the fire department had it. And the they would build the sidewalk, you need the side, hopefully someday the sidewalk will be on that side of the road, but the sidewalk was on the other side of the road already. Well, that, you know, so. I I I agree with that to give us some latitude to to judge and. Hey, the sidewalk's on the other side, you're required to put one in for and you don't, we have somebody that's throwing that, I got something to do with that.
Right, I mean, the the North Main Street is a classic example that, you know, the town is hoping at. In the future that we'll have a connection from like over by where it ends at the post office, it's only down to Route twenty, but. In reality, if you look at both sides of the road, it makes sense to be on the east bound of North Main Street versus. The west side of North Main Street, that's where we're probably going to see the more improvements. And that's where, you know, it'd be more appropriate to go to sidewalk, it's a little bit of a hill on the other side, you know. You know, some becomes from the west side of North Main Street in the town intends to. Get a continuous sidewalk on the east side of North Main Street, then. Greenwood could see fit to have a property or use the payment lieu rather than build sidewalk that's on their property.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, just one question, so the established side of the street, is this a suggested policy, is this the policy, or is this just an example of what? Um yeah, why were those chosen sidewalks there already or?
Right, this is a men, the current by law. As it is in the uh.
Okay, so the by law has changed, but these policies.
This is kind of establishing where the preferred locations are in the town, you know. So you have property owners or developers to learn the guidance on where the town is really looking to. Hopefully see future sidewalk, so.
So as as part of that policy, why were why were those sites chosen or why was this particular spot chosen or?
Um it's based on either topography, wetlands, or.
Where this existing sidewalks now.
Receive a future development that more appropriate on one side versus the other.
Okay.
Right, anyone else from the board have a comment question on the sidewalk? Proposed sidewalk by law. All right, this time I'd like to open it up to the public comment on the zoning by law revision of the village district regulation pertaining to uh. The sidewalks, if you have any comments or questions, please state your name and address for the record. All right. Hearing none, seeing none. We have a motion to reclose the public hearing.
Make a motion post-public hearing for the zoning by law amendment or sidewalks in the village district.
All those in favor? I.
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 I. I. All right, do we have a motion to we need to um vote to um.
Make a correction. Yeah.
I'll make a motion that the planning board recommend the zoning by law amendment for sidewalks of village district, who change as shown. Second.
All those in favor?
I.
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 I. I. All right, here's your answers. All right, next up, we have a public hearing for Dolphin's Concrete Incorporated Site Plan Application, one forty six Worcester Road, Route twenty. In accordance with section two hundred dash three point two, two hundred there seven point one D and two hundred dash seven point two of the child complaint by law, the child's plan board will hold a remote public hearing on Wednesday. May third, twenty twenty three at seven oh five P M by Zoom meeting, meeting ID number two one one two nine three two two five seven, and in person, meeting at thirty seven Main Street. Dalton Mass, oh one five oh seven, on the request of Dolphin's Concrete Incorporated, one Lackey Dam Road, Douglas Mass, oh one five one six, the site plan application. They sell a concrete plant on the property, the property colony has a landscape materials area. And a construction materials area, the property contains approximately seven point nine plus or minus acres. The property is located at one forty six Worcester Road, Route twenty, the property ID is assesses map thirty five block seed lot. In his own community business, this meeting of the chopping point word will be conducted in person and via remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of. The public and or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Chatham website at W W W dot Chatham dot net. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner, video participation, H T T P S colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S. Backslash two one one two nine three two two five seven, meeting ID two one one two nine three two two five seven, phone access one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Copies of the site plan and application are available for instruction at the planning board office and the town clerk's office during regular business hours, the application is also posted on the town website under playing board. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Before we get started, I'd like to uh read a letter from the. Zoning enforcement officer as it pertains to this particular site plan application. Dated April eighteen, twenty twenty three, based on the claim by D C Engineering and Survey Incorporated dated April seventh, two thousand. Three for a concrete plant located at one forty six Worcester Road, this office, I presume is twenty twenty three, located at one forty six Worcester Road, this office. Offers the following comments, the property is in a community business zone with approximately seven hundred and fifty three. Feet of furniture and seven point nine acres of area, the community business zone requires a lot to have one hundred and fifty feet of furniture and forty thousand square foot of area. In the past, this parcel has been granted site plan approval for landscape. Business with an open storage bins and canopies over other storage bins which will remain in November of twenty twenty. Plans were approved or stored containers located in the area where the concrete plant is now proposed, this office has no concern for the proposed use. As the law has more than sufficient area and footage in accordance with the zoning by law section two hundred dash three point three C, number one. Point five, which allows two or more principal uses on the same lot, if they are functioning equipment to that required at separate lots. This is section two hundred dash three point two B and seven H, while stone, sand, and or gravel processing operations with site plan review and community. Business on respect to Curtis must is. Philly Commission's zoning enforcement office and. All right, we want to open up the new applicants and review.
Yeah, all right, go right ahead, Jay, you're right, Randy, before we start, I think there's people waiting to get in, listen to the meeting.
You are.
There's people waiting, I think, to listen.
Yeah.
They can get in. I'm Jason Dubois, D C Engineering and Survey, I have a childhood. Kristoffany's from Daphne's Concrete. Um this property, one forty six Worcester Road. As chairman mentioned, does have some uses on the site, landscape uses up in the front, you know, Larry's landscape. That's up in this portion. Up in here, uh new twenty is positioned in this section here, is Larry's landscape. Um that's his office, and then there's security barriers along this area here, and we're proposing our work behind that. Where legal was, all the niece was using as a stockpile area as they were doing work for the town. Uh they're now done with that, so we're proposing uh diffuse. Um there's a concrete plant area. Uh on the site, you have the bash plant, which is located right here. Uh this is a wash pit area for the trucks, once they are filled, they come in here and just, you know, wash off any, any, you know, residual concrete off the chute. Um these areas over here are designated with uh Jersey barriers for aggregate for the stone and sand. Uh to be placed in there that would be, you know, dashed into the into the concrete. Um and over here's a a flat concrete pad area for any um. You know, to wash out the chutes if they come back into any any actual material. Uh that would be placed on that, and then once it's hardened up, it would be. It's about the lower and 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 taken off site to a different a different site that they have. Um. The flow would come in from North Main Street into the site, uh basically drive around here. Um drive underneath the bash plant. Back out, wash off, and then it would would leave the site. Um in the same same location. So this area currently is all gravel, um all over here, we're proposing to pave. From where the asphalt currently ends, that would be paved down to below the area that they would be driving on. And this area that's all basically disturbed area right now, it's just exploded or dirt. We're posing to loom and see all that, just the basically offsets the stormwater. So going from gravel to asphalt and now asphalt to lawn, we do have a bio retention area as well to to treat the runoff that would be coming off the asphalt. This project is in front of graves right now, but here we go, I know we don't have anything back from them. Um so tonight, I think we just want to try and, you know, get any any uh concerns from the board. And go from there, any specific questions on the, you know, the operations, I guess I would defer to Chris on on how that would would work.
Is the main entry and exit going to be onto um North Main Street?
Yes.
So not not really going to use the Route twenty?
No.
Okay. Actually, that wrong at the same question, you're not using the C V S driveway, you're using the other driveway next to the C V S driveway, or is it? Uh is that the two driveways side by side?
Yes.
One goes through the C V S parking lot behind the C V S building, does that other driveway or through driveway?
Through the C V S.
Yes, the C V S, the paid driveway.
Is that allowed? Can you get that?
We have an easement. Why?
You have an easement? Okay.
You still own the property.
Okay. The C V S know about that?
That we own the property?
No, I'm sure they're aware of that. That you're going to be.
Have a an easement. Use that driveway to connect to the other property, I guess.
Go ahead, Don.
So for for Larry's landscaping that's there now, is there a demarcation line between the two businesses, or are they both sharing the same? As will they be sharing the same property?
I mean, it's all the same property, so.
Yeah, but I mean, there is, it's so there there's.
There won't be Jersey barriers that basically runs right along this area here, so I mean, that, you know, that kind of separates off the front portion of the rear portion.
But he, but Larry's landscape also has, where you've got the concrete pad, he's got more stuff behind that, so it would be.
This is where his salt camp is, so he would still, yeah.
He would still access through that property to get to his soul. I think so.
Yep.
So he's going to lose a couple of bins there on the end?
Yeah, he'll have to lose a couple of bins there with what he'll remember, I guess.
And this is community business?
Yes. Yeah, this online actually runs right through there.
So from that zone line to Route twenty is community business?
Yeah.
What is on the other side?
Here down at R forty.
Okay.
And then here over is Village. So the the lot, there's a lot of zone lines around here.
I know.
This is um. Village basically comes around like this around the backside of the property.
Okay, what's that area right there that you just went around, what is that?
This is our, from from here to here is our authority.
Okay.
Which should just just become one.
Not village.
What's that?
I don't like to village over there, our four years on else is.
Yeah, yeah, Village is all here, uh you know, this is this one village I've changed.
No, it's Village.
Yeah, this is Village out to the most main with main street, and this little strip here and and down in the backyard is. Uh R forty, so the the village R forty line is right here. Here, which is kind of, it wraps around the site.
The R forty zone is still on our property, correct?
Yes. Yeah.
Are you going to be parking trucks overnight?
As of right now. As of right now, no, mainly be a satellite location course, we'd start our day at our main facility in Douglas.
Yep.
Trucks would come out this way.
Yep.
Reload here during the day.
Yep.
And then and then they back in Douglas.
Yeah.
And and Jay talked about this pad here.
Yeah.
If we come back from your job and we have leftover concrete.
Yep.
We ribbon that out of the truck, we let it hide, and then we scrape it up, we'd haul it out of the site the next day with a dump truck to one of our facilities. Facility with a rock crusher, and then we sell it as processed gravel, so.
Are there going to be any other trucks parked? Not necessarily yours, but are you going to have other trucks still parking there overnight?
In the in the area that they're leasing, no.
Okay.
No, we're going to clean, again, this will kind of clean up that area. There may be some trucks that are parked up front by Route twenty, now the car carriers, you see, they're probably still going to stay, but we're probably going to move them towards. The opposite side of the Jersey barriers. And again, there's only five or six of them, and. We're just going to try and get them off of Route twenty and clean some stuff up as part of this project, so. Again, I think this this project has potential to kind of clean the site up back there and. Make it nicer and hopefully more inviting the people to come in up front.
So I had.
Chair, a couple of questions, what what are the inputs to the process? As we use to make the concrete.
Sand, stone, water, cement.
And so that's what the storage bays are for, those.
Yeah, for these bays here would be, these would be different sized aggregates used in the in the different mix of the concrete. The cement stored in the silo overhead here. And these four conveyors here is what just transfers the material from the low point to the high point to be able to go into the trucks.
Right.
So this is all enclosed, this whole portion would be enclosed. Um is and and these bins would be enclosed as well. Want to keep the dust down, keep some noise, you know, and then it keeps it keep it at a one to time for us.
It's also structured.
Yeah, the the silo that we have currently on, it's about sixty people. It's the the plant that's currently sitting at the Amazon project.
And at sixty feet tall?
I believe so.
Now, question just up there, you know, site right now.
Yeah.
On Route twenty for Amazon, is that how you have it set up there now, so that if anyone from the board wants to see how it's the kind of visual?
Yeah.
What it looks like?
Yeah, it's it's set up in roughly the same configuration, granted, we don't, this would have a nice.
No, yes, understood.
We have a temporary.
Concept wise.
Building around, but same concept, yes, all right, yep.
So the extra few portions of it are actually going to be like in the building or?
Yeah. Or? Yeah, that'd be in the steel building heated. Yeah, yeah.
So ju- just on the input, so there's also water, so you've got the four inch water service, is that existing, or that's that'd be a new?
That's a stub now that would be tied into that.
I think.
It's up by Route twenty.
So raw material in the in the bunkers, in the storage base right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then how about power, how how is this power?
So it's three phase power, and I believe right now the three phase power sits right here. Right at this point, so we'd be bringing power from here to the plant here.
All overhead.
Probably underground.
Underground, yeah, yeah.
Taking it out, actually show them.
Yeah.
Um.
And what what are the hours of operation?
We've discussed that, my father and I, and the way we'd look at this operation here. To try to keep it as late as starts as possible. We'd start our days at our other facilities, send trucks this way, that's why we didn't want to talk about packing a lot of trucks here, because. We start early in the morning, concrete's an early business.
Right.
We'd like to think on a normal operating day, seven A M starts.
Mm hmm.
Um. There will be times. That would want to come and ask for earlier starts, I think everyone's aware, there could be another warehouse built in town. And the option sometime is build a plant on site like we have now, or truck it to the site, which. Right now, we have a plant set on site because there wasn't really a facility close enough to the site to to give the services needed. So we'd like to hope if another big warehouse came in town, we'd want to supply it in town, maybe days would have to start earlier.
Mm hmm.
Um but normal business hours, seven to five.
And so this is a like a secondary auxiliary, so and the main plants in Douglas?
Yeah, our main facility, we have a main facility in Douglas and a second, actually main facility in Bellingham. Another facility in Douglas. And our family's always been out in this neck of the woods and business, we had a concrete plant in Charlton right on Route twenty from the eighties. Until we sold the business, and we had them in Southbridge. And it's always an area that we've been involved in. And would like to get back in this area, and right now, coming from Douglas. You you lose trucks for a long time, it's an hour ride, and you lose a lot of productivity, and right now, trying to find. Employees to drive mix of trucks. It's not easy, so we look at as we send the truck out loaded, the truck is heading home loaded. They they constantly loaded, and I think this is a growing area out in this neck of the woods that we could. Uh benefit from from being local to it.
So with the, so the inputs, and then when the trucks come back, they go into this contained uh wall pit. And that's you're you're flushing them out and.
Right, so so when the truck comes back, if it has leftover concrete, we we get rid of that concrete.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and when the truck's loaded. There's a dust collection system, everything to to capture emissions when the trucks load, but there's always going to be some residue on the truck, so without the trucks. Loaded, he would pull over here, and and much like at the at our old family's old facility further up on Route twenty. You see up by the road, they have a concrete contained area where it catches the water, so that way that we pull up on a pad. Anything that we wash off the trucks stays in that sediment area, and again, we clean that sediment out, call it offsite, and the water that's in there. Would be pumped underground back to the plant, so we can use the recycled water and the concrete.
One truck at a time?
One truck at a time would be loading here, and this area over here would be wide enough for two trucks.
Maybe two?
Yeah, yeah, two two truck base side by side, yeah.
So set, so you want the trucks out of there by seven A M on the road, this way?
We'd be starting to load trucks at seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So trucks will be pulling out of there quarter past seven.
So the loading, sorry, the loading of the plant would start before seven.
Right, because the 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 plant would be preloaded, so when we shut it off at night, the plant's fully loaded to start the day. And then there's enough in there to get the first four to six trucks loaded in the morning. But, you know, so the loader, the front end loader, there'd be a front end loader parked there, that hits that is there at seven o'clock, fill in the plant once we start moving trucks.
The chair. The chair. Chris, you talked about the.
Ricky, you talked about the D E P approvals you need?
Yeah, so. Once, once we receive town approval, the next step we go to is D E P approvals, their air quality controls. So the plant's got to meet air quality controls and dust emissions, um, dust collection systems where the truck loads, dust collection where the. Top of the silo is where the cement goes into the silo. Um, so currently we have a full D E P permit for Charlton for the plant. Where it sits currently on on the portable site, um, so we would work the D E P to transfer that. Things that D E P would have us do here as well is, which we have at our other locations is. We'd run an underground water line to these bins to be able to sprinkle water on the materials. So if it is dry and dusty in the summer, would have the ability to sprinkle the material, keep any dust down. And again, would keep a a sweeper on site, so that way there the parking lot would be swept and maintained on a daily basis to keep any dust down. Um. We try to run a run operation, um, and try to keep it, we 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 like to stay on top of things, so.
That's a, it's a major stormwater, you know, wastewater generator, I'm sure.
It can be, yes. You're not reusing the water and.
Yeah.
And doing a property, it can be, you gotta really be on top of it.
So it's conservation consultant on this, where where are they in the?
Yeah, we're gonna be filing them. Flag, so I'm gonna be filing them. You know, probably in the next week.
Yeah, where are the wetlands?
Uh, the wetlands are back. Um, they're basically back along the existing tree line.
Just at the R forty right there?
Yeah, they've it, I mean, it's been where the the site's been cleared for a long time, the wetlands are basically just inside the tree line.
And that's where you're gonna put the infiltration basin?
That's where the bio retention is going in the lawn area.
Hmm.
And you know, right now, this is, this is exposed like her up to the wetlands, so that'll all be, that'll all be, you know, cleaned up, moved and seeded.
Do you require monitoring wells in there around the property?
No.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, what what's going on with that existing drain running underneath? Will be you're using that drain to make the bio retention area there?
Yeah, so right now there's a, existing catch basin that's right here. And then the pipe basically flows out into the woods over here. Um. Actually, no, existing catch basin right there. But this is where the wash pits proposed, so we're gonna extend that pipe up to the catch basin here.
Yeah.
And then we're also extending another pipe up to here and over into here with another catch basin to catch the water that's coming down. You know, from the the remaining portion of the site. So basically, we're catching all this water that's currently going through the site and it's gonna bypass and go around. So it's not, it's not going across the the new asphalted area.
And it's going into the retention area, it's not continuing.
It's gonna, it's gonna continue to flow, it's gonna bypass it and move right into the existing pipe that it's currently going into now.
And which empties out into the torch of the wetland.
Yes. Yeah.
Wouldn't you have to have like a water water call, the unit there, does it?
What we do for the new pavement.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the bio retention area which we can leave an area.
And bio retention, so that's active filtering bio retention and monitoring?
Yeah, that does the loss risk and the D S O.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that detention basin, that in-ground infiltration, that's like two hundred feet by fifteen feet?
That's acting up to the site that that's existing.
Oh, so you're not trying to?
Exxon Mobil wants all that for groundwater remediation.
That's an existing structure.
So you're not, oh, that's not yours, you're not touching that, yours is totally the just the.
Yes.
Yeah. That was in Exxon Mobil, so what are they catching, like groundwater?
They they were pumping groundwater out, treating it, and then be discharging it through that filtration system.
Oh, and it's unused.
Correct, for the last eight to ten years it hasn't been used.
What is it, a concrete bunker?
It's a big infiltration.
First pipe that's still in sand.
It's perfect to use again for stormwater in the future.
Yeah, yeah, alright.
No, yeah, no, it's it's all perforated by this stone.
Like, any of the comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I got a.
Go ahead, Jean.
Um. The water is, you know, since we have to be from the water department here, is it, have you allotted water for this?
I mean, we're waiting for you guys to get something before I went funding a board, but I'm not sure what the. We haven't talked about what the need would be, but yeah, I don't think the.
Another question, this may be a stupid question, but I'm not real up on this stuff. Are you gonna be processing gravel, making it smaller, big, not bigger, but grinding it, mushing it, whatever you wanna call it?
We'd be bringing in as much finished product as possible to go back to the areas, you know. Yeah, we're we look not looking to do any crushing on site.
Or processing or anything like that?
Mainly mainly crushing. I know crushing is the main thing that we're not looking to do there, um. I don't think we'd do any screening there, mainly bring everything as finished as possible.
Okay, um, and. So this is all coming from your other.
Like the 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 raw materials?
Right.
Would bring in from like a hillcar or.
Oh, okay.
Something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um. And you saw that together and you make your concrete?
Yes.
Oh. No, no, should we bring that up now? I'm just concerned about the use. More or less, um.
Yeah, I mean, everything you described with, you know, um, comes off as industrial, not. Not processing, it's you manufacturing concrete, you're.
It's a heavy industrial uses what. It's where it's at in our book right now.
Right.
It's under heavy industrial uses, not processing, not anything else, um. And it's, I just have a little sticking point on that.
Yeah, I mean, in our in our zoning bylaw. Ready mixed concrete is is a heavy industrial use. Uh, and we don't allow heavy industrial uses in community business, do we?
It's not a use table at all, there's no asphalt plants allowed.
So that's that's my sticking point is I I don't think it fits well in with the community business, just because it's not. A community business and it and it clearly is heavy industrial use for for that, so.
I think Kurt was mentioning, just since you're processing materials.
Well, that's different, processing materials is was one thing, you're you're screening alone, you're you're, that's the kind of thing, it's processing materials. This, you're actually producing another product out of it, um, and and it's stated right here. Under heavy industrial uses, ready mixed concrete.
My my question is the material ready to use once it leaves the truck or once it's put in the truck?
It has to be mixed in the truck, okay, plant is not doing the mixing. Now, there is concrete plants, we have in Douglas, we have two different types of plants. We have a dry batch, so this is where it's a gray area. The mixer truck itself, at this type of facility, does the mixing. We also have a plant in Douglas where the mixing is done in the plant. We have two different ones side by side.
Yeah.
One of them, the truck pulls under. It gets all the dry materials, the truck backs away, it mixes, it makes the concrete. The other plant, it goes in the truck. And it's the truck just drives away.
Do you have a recipe for concrete?
Yeah.
And so it's made in that plant?
That separate, that ways, that that blends.
That blends is that makes?
That weighs the material.
That makes the recipe?
Process.
So the mix that, yeah, it.
Process.
It's.
Processed.
Yeah, you're you're making the recipe, it's a it's a batch process. You're making, it's that's heavy industrial, you're mixing, it doesn't matter where the actual mixing happens. The magic is in the the ingredients that you're putting in, the water in there and mixing.
Mixer is part of the manufacturing.
Yeah, that's part of it, yeah.
Because the, you when you buy a mixer truck, there's sales tax on the truck. The mixer is tax exempt, because that's part of the.
That's the main factor.
Right.
Because otherwise, if you're in a dump truck, it wouldn't, you know.
Right, yeah.
So you're putting the wrong material based on whatever product is.
Right.
And the mixer itself is actually what.
Mixes. Right here, yeah.
So the plant's just sending the different.
Different, the materials weighs it, it's all come by weights and measure.
Yeah.
Right, so then I'm producing the product on site.
Yeah, sure.
They are, they're they're putting it together in in the truck and they're mixing it on site, you're gonna leave the truck, you're gonna move the truck before you mix it?
But you start there.
And it's kind of it's it's similar to loading the trucks in the plant with mulch and limestone and they're driving.
But that's stone and and.
That's a finished product.
Finished product that you're, I mean, even if you were making foam, you're 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 processing the gravel, you're not. Making concrete.
Saying it's it's basically what Larry's is doing.
Yeah, okay, I mean, it's clear to me that, like so, it's it's clear to me that the concrete is is heavy industrial.
Hey, hold up. So, let's do this, so we don't get into a back and forth.
True.
We we show that there's an opinion on this side, there's an opinion from the zoning enforcement office, there's an opinion from the. So we'll get a uh opinion from our third party.
Sure.
And, um, we'll do that, but just to keep the public hearing process going, is there any other questions from?
The board.
I mean, the other.
Go ahead, John.
I just have a question. The asphalt driveway shown on the plan. Does that, is that there now going down that side?
Yeah.
I can't remember in the back as well. It's a dumpster right there, is that where? Yeah, and I see the answer. But back to Gene, so so that that house block goes to the garage, the. The adjacent driveway, because it goes like this and that one kind of goes down like that.
No, the well, the property, the driveway that goes into C V S.
Yeah.
Goes into C V S, but it also slants off to the right and slopes down and goes. It's already paved, it's part of the. It was part of the C V S site.
Okay, yeah, all right, I remember, all right. And and to Gene's point, that's what you're doing, because you access this.
Like we currently do, yes.
You know, you don't have any idea, once the truck is ready and we go on ours, we. You don't know where that truck, I mean, you do know where the truck is going, but it can be going in any directions, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't know whether what is gonna be a conservant shop in Oxford.
Right, okay.
From field.
Okay, no worries, okay.
Just another comment, the manufacturing of it is the is the recipe, the processing, the energy you're putting into it, the other raw materials. That's being transformed into another product, you know, through the mixing of the truck, that's the manufacturing. It's not just loading sand into a truck or loading bark much into a truck, totally different than Larry's. There's a manufacturing, in fact, it's heavy manufacturing, because you've got so much stormwater, wastewater back. Coming out of it, that's a manufacturing process.
There's no wastewater.
Yeah, when you clean out the trucks on the other side of that, that's total wastewater. That's by definition in the stormwater bylaws, that that's wastewater.
The hole, the darn holes on the.
That's just totally wastewater, look at, look at the stormwater management bylaws. The reason the stormwater management bylaws are in there is to cat, it calls out specifically cement truck wash.
There's there's no water leaving the site though, it's going right back into the plant.
It's not. Yeah, but it's it's stormwater that you have to at least. Conservation is gonna be on, I'm I'm also saying with stormwater, it's not wastewater, there's no organic material, it's not wastewater.
Even that, it's just, it's just water that that's being sprayed on the truck.
Yeah.
Goes into a drainage, go right back into into the truck.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll run a bike race, okay, we're running by grace. Yeah. We'll make the call on that, all right? All right, any of the, um, comments or questions from the board? All right, at this time, I'd like to open it up.
I have a question.
It's not, I'm just getting ready to open up the questions. At this time, to open the, uh. Public hearing up to questions, if you have any questions or comments, please state your name and address for the record, please. I go right ahead, Lisa?
Yeah.
She's on mute.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, no, and and it's really not a question, and it's something just on a side note, knowing that there's some residential within, you know, within the area too. Um, besides the hour of operations, I also am just curious about environmental. For residential in the area, just wanted to throw that out there.
All right, what was your address, Lisa?
Uh, sure, three A Vinson Road in Shelton.
Okay, all right, thank you, I know we are gonna have, Grace Engineering is reviewing the site plan for all that. That stuff that you have, uh, just mentioned. We're just waiting for the peer review comments to come back. All right, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Go right ahead.
Mike Tiberi.
Yep.
Twenty seven each button road extension, Charles. So, several questions and a comment, right? So you mentioned your hours of operations start at seven AM, um, that's Mondays through Friday, I assume, or is that?
Monday through Friday, if we work on weekends, we work seven to twelve hours.
Okay, how about Sunday?
We do that at one of our other locations, it has no restrictions.
Okay. Aggregate deliveries, are they gonna be done?
Yeah. Okay.
So how many trucks per day rolling in and out of here?
So the plant's capable of producing maximum full capacity. A hundred forty to a hundred fifty yards an hour, that's fifteen trucks an hour. Um, sand and gravel trucks, right now, up in, um. We we hauling from Hillgarde up to the Amazon.
Yeah.
When the plant's running there, it's running full capacity. Running full capacity here would only be if we have a large warehouse or something like that going.
Yeah.
We see this being a two hundred yard a day plant on average, which is twenty loads a day.
Yeah.
Full, you know, full truck loads, ten yards of full truck. Um, so two hundred ton of material, we would probably have to keep on a normal day, one. Dump truck or trailer dump hauling aggregate materials in, on a busy day, two to three. You know, because we keep the storage bins here. Would have enough material for several days, so we'd want to have it so if there was a dump truck working, it worked five days a week supplying it. Um, but max capacity for that plant is fifteen more than that one.
Okay.
You can't get any more through it, I've tried.
Couple of other questions, and this goes on manufacturing. Hot water, I assume you're you're heating hot water on.
Right.
Yeah, so what's fuel source gonna be?
Propane.
Propane, what, how many gallons propane?
So, uh, to run that size tank, you would have. Four, right now, we had four one thousand gallon tanks.
Okay.
That's what we had, that's what we had on site.
Okay.
And that's what we would use to heat the buildings would be propane.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Um, the other question I also have is, what was the height again, you mentioned, is it sixty feet?
That silo there, I'd have to do a refreshment, because we we can change silo height, but I think that one is sixty.
Okay, the other aggregate aggregate is cement, right? Quarter of cement.
Yeah.
Which is dusty.
Right, that's why we have the dust block.
Okay.
Um, D E P won't let us put, they regulate the microns, they regulate everything now.
Okay. So, little history with my family. My family came from Italy, they own the property over here where La Mountain is now. This is all farmland, under Tiberi's about hundred twenty-five years ago. Um, I know Peter, since we were kids, I used to pick corn over here. Um, I live over here, this is all residential, it's residential back here. I'm I'm a proponent for the business, okay, I'm a proponent of the Amazon. I'm ki- I'm kind of renegeing that a little bit after seeing how big that building is up there and what the viewpoints we see in town. And it's gonna be, you know, it's revenue generating, tax base, it's great. However, I personally do not like this being here. Because it's obstructive, it's, we have a nice C V S here, we have a bank across the street. We're trying to develop Route twenty tactfully, we have the fitness center of the street, it was just built very well done. Uh, Larry's landscaping, I don't like it, I hear trucks two AM being delivered, materials coming in, I don't know if it's. Um, blown or whatever it is, I hear the the tailgates of the dump trucks, two AM. And I'm gonna start reporting it, but I have a concern with the concrete operation. I work construction, I've been doing construction my whole career, I hear seven AM. I've been on jobs in Boston, we're getting concrete deliveries at six AM.
Oh, yeah, I I said on bigger boards, I would go to the town and request early starts, I know.
I realize.
I went to work at ten o'clock last night, I worked all night long, so I'm fully aware of concrete, I want all hours of the day, but. When you guys have your new sidewalks in town.
Well, I know that.
You want concrete, you want asphalt, I wanna bring it.
They have no problem building this, you had a plant up on two, on the edge of, on the edge of. Correct, Sturbridge, right, which was Thompson's way back when. It's kind of out of sight, out of mind, there's no residential, right, other than one house across the street and now.
Yeah, the condos, right.
It's just not the right location, I wish the town maybe could help out, trying to find a new location, right? If the residential, you got a residential around here, it just, for me, it just doesn't work. That's, no, I I I'd love to have you come.
Would love to be in town if there's another, you know.
Yeah, I. But I just think it's not the right.
Somebody work with the EDC or.
All right, anyone else from the public have a question or comment?
So I have a good question, my my.
Name, man.
Oh, Andrew says, I guess seventeen North Main Street.
Yep.
So right now, it's. The back half of that's all dirt, so I mean, it rains, it just kind of goes down into the ground and flows, if you pave all that now, I'm a bloody wetland.
Yeah.
Down, down off of that, I mean, it's just gonna shoot out, what's that gonna do to the pond that's back there, the wetlands? What's that gonna do to the street?
That's why I engineer is looking at it to make sure that all the asphalt, all the new pavement goes to the catch basin. Does what it needs to do and then it gets disassembled.
I mean, you can see the pipes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rent at the edge line. Fight that shoots out, whatever, so. That was the only thing I had was.
All right. All right, anyone else?
Yeah, Peter Cuddin fifteen North Main Street.
Yeah.
You mentioned like the conveyor belts going, how often are they going, are they going continuously and the conveyor belts run continuous? So that would be.
Every load.
So.
So when it loads a truck, the conveyors turn on, and then they reload the plant. When, you know, because inside the plant has uh level indicators. When it takes a load of material out of the plant, conveyors come on, the conveyors are fairly quiet.
Just during operating, not in the middle of.
No, no, they shut up, no, when we, when we go, when we shut the place down, we lock it up, it's, everything's killed, power outage, yeah.
What about um like the processing and mixing, I mean, how loud is that machinery?
The 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 concrete plant would be all enclosed, you really wouldn't even hear, it's all air operated. All the valves and all the pistons are air operated. Um the loudest thing is is the truck itself, the truck motor is the loudest thing.
So I I drove by your your operation in Douglas yesterday, was that running, because I I didn't hear a lot, but is that?
Okay.
That was running, okay. That was running.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
There one other comment.
Go ahead, man.
Well, you said, you know, two hundred yards per day, two hundred yards per.
Average, right.
Average, yeah, all right, you get a big, you get another big warehouse, it's not gonna work like.
That's, that's what I said, right, that that there, if we do a floor there right now. It's uh a big floor, it's a hundred loads a day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But those aren't coming every day, the child.
But the, I do, I do know about Amazon, when that was set up, you you guys were producing the most concrete in this area. And it was hard to get concrete elsewhere, I worked for Fontaine Bros.
That's fine, we don't supply them.
I know.
You couldn't get it from my competition.
So.
It's fine, but I'm just saying, we we produced a lot of concrete last year, and I got concrete to every individual that wanted.
So the only comment I have, the insight specific to set up one of these, yeah, you're, you know, whatever, but to set it up, Peter, no, I. Dead against it.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board?
All right. Go right ahead, Peter. As a property owner, as a developer.
Yeah.
This wasn't just conceived and brought to you guys, these guys met with Randy, they met with Kurt to determine if it was a possibility. They spent a lot of money to get to this point, and to do so, again, from the zoning enforcement officer. I I need to understand the process a little better, because you tell everyone, come in, talk to Randy, talk to Kurt, talk to EDC, well, that's great. We get here and you don't agree with it, what what does that do to us, what does that do to me? Sure, you guys are gonna send them to another piece of property in town, but what about me? I'm still paying taxes on that land that you won't let me develop what I wanted to do. But I appreciate what you're doing, and everyone wants something different there, that's great, I haven't said no to anybody. Nobody else has come to us and said, hey, we wanna lease your property. And what's existing there now is worse than must be in proposed. So I'm looking for something to help me clean it up, to help it be better, to make it better, to draw something in to the front portion to go next to CBS. I'm working towards that, I don't think this is against that, I appreciate your concerns. The process doesn't work, the process you established isn't working. So I just ask you again, I I understand, I ask you to to look at that process and tell us the correct way to do it. So we don't get here again, after spending twenty thousand dollars to hear, we don't think it's right, when the zoning enforcement officer said it's allowed.
That's excellent.
Because I did, I did have a a lot, many talks with the with Kurt. Before we started moving forward, I put out there, here's what it is, I said, you know what the concrete plant is, we're not, you can drive. Five minutes from here and go look at it with me, I've seen it a number of times. And before we had Jay move forward, I wanted to make sure I'm not spending money down a dead end road. And I had several conversations with him to make sure that he understood what we do there. And to see what his interpretation of what we do. Before we move forward to make sure it's allowed, because. I don't wanna spend ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars to find out that.
You can't do it.
You can't do it.
We haven't.
He could have told me that three months ago.
We haven't heard anything back yet from our engineer either, he hasn't reviewed.
Sure, no, I understand, but I'm just saying.
He may look at it. People can look at the same thing and come up with five different.
I I agree, no, no, I, no, I don't, I don't disagree, it's everyone's open to their own interpretation, I just.
Graves isn't gonna review the use. Graves is gonna review stormwater, Graves is gonna review some stuff, it's not gonna review the.
And that was also some.
And and again, we do, yes. So. We uh we just addressed that, and that's great feedback, Mr. Boria, so from the Economic Development Committee, we recently had. A real estate developers conference held at the Overlook the other week. I was, I know you were there, so that that was a lot of the feedback that we had, like what is the process to determine this, and. I think a lot of time we're pointing out maybe the wrong parties and roles are involved earlier in the process than they should be. And the planning board always has an open door policy to just not even get to Brent's level, but like come in with a concept. And talk it over either with the Economic Development Committee or with the Planning Board, you can get on our agenda anytime. But I think we need to communicate and message that a lot clearer, because I hate to see this, like there's a ton of money. Put into the the designs here for this plant. Um so you you really don't want surprises at this point in the game, I hear you a lot and.
So I guess, coming out of this meeting, you're gonna review with your, you have a land use attorney, you're gonna.
Yeah, we're gonna run it by him. Dave McKay, but he's.
Messed up his knee and his skin.
So he's gonna review it, he's been the one that we've been using for the last year or so.
He's got a review based on is the use issues allowed.
Exactly. Yeah. All right, all right.
I think that actually based on what we were, what we heard tonight, it might be helpful. To clarify things on how this mixing operation is done, the prep versus add a plant, and then poured into a rec. That might be how Kurt made the determination.
Right back, correct?
So I think that if we get like a brief. The overview of how it's done here, might be useful to the attorney, writing to review this application.
It's not just use, it's also, we consider the public and the neighborhood and all of that as well, so it's not just that use ruling that we're looking at.
Gary Mumm, this isn't a special permit, this is just cycle, cannot be arbitrary. All right.
Yeah.
That's the one thing to remember, you cannot be arbitrary.
If the, if the use is allowed, it's.
If it's a why, we have to, it's an allowed use, that's it, you cannot be arbitrary.
But that's really the question, is this an allowed use, yeah, it comes back, and it is, then we'll work with the with the plan to to get it right.
So would one work, but you.
Yeah, absolutely, you know.
I I understand, but when I drive by it, I'd be, I'd be proud of it driving by it, I don't wanna see it, but.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm just saying.
All right, we have a motion to continue the public hearing.
Did we get everybody yet? Anybody else?
Oh, we have one, yes, you have a question?
Uh yes, uh this is uh Mike O'Hara, I actually own the property directly across the street over at eight North Main Street. I purchased a property here, about seventeen acres.
Yep.
Uh zone community business, and um I just wanted to speak against the project, I just think that. Heavy use, heavy industrial use, and what we're trying to do on the set across the street is uh retail development and or multifamily. And a concrete plant would be uh, I think detrimental to the neighborhood for retail or multifamily development. And uh for that reason, I'm speaking against it for that use.
All right, Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? From the public? All right, hearing none, seen none, we have a motion to continue the public hearing, thanks for letting me know.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing till two.
May seventeen, seven fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. All right, Gina, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing for Valerie Reduce Frontage Lot Specular Permit from Stevens Park Road and City Depot. The applicant has requested to be continuing till May seventeen.
Yeah, waiting for a report back to Graves Engineering. A second review, which they haven't received yet, so their engineer requests to be changed to go.
All right, we have a motion to continue the, this public hearing from May seven, two noon, at seven twenty-five.
Make a motion to continue the bearing to bear. Big seventeen?
All right, all those in favor, at a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Hi, all right. Next up, we have the continued public hearing for ZP Valley Development Company LLC Portaway Defensive Subdivision Plan three twenty-five Worcester Road. Review the decision.
Yes, the planning board actually did drive up for decisions. Is recorded, one thing that isn't attached to this, they can get the uh, the waivers that will be. Um all the waivers in question will be attached to this decision, will be with attached to this decision.
Anyone have any uh issues with the uh items listed?
I think some of the, through the chair, just some of the, some of the language involved, so. On uh maybe item number eleven kind of addresses it a little bit, you know, approval of this is for the. Proposed lot only, and um. There, you know, it's something about the other lots that are, were consuming the frontage and areas and. Of the other lots. So, it's considered for this lot that's proposed, but the other lots, since we're we're. We're borrowing from them, I don't know how to articulate this, but are we proposing to, no further development can happen on the other lots?
I I think what it says is um. If any further subdivision, or I'm not gonna change subdivision to um. Use or use or, because it says involves new traffic generating uses, um subdivision for. So development of any of the lots.
Yeah.
Or development on other lots that increase.
Going on any of the lots, because you were reading it, and it's fixed value, it sounds like it's only, but only if it's.
Right.
Applies for the subdivision, you want development as well.
Or development.
Further development of any of the other lots in the subdivision. Any further development of. Any of the lots. In the subdivision. Which, you know, then, which increases the, yeah, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that's just me, wordsmithing, or anyone else, somebody comments on there, is definitely, we need a.
Copy our end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you know, cover our intents that we were talking about earlier, this isn't coming up, just in this meeting, we talked about this earlier on.
Yeah. Right.
For the development or use of the lots. Or additional use, or additional, and if further development or additional use. The remaining lots in the subdivision, yeah. With some of the right.
Maybe uh additional indoor change of views.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, change.
You're gonna reduce it more intense.
Or change of.
I'll do the indoor, so kind of cover.
Yeah. So, and are these conditions attached to the deed?
It's recorded. Recorded to, yeah, this is recorded.
My document, and it references.
This is, so would it be recorded to the deed of each of the lots or the subdivision?
Goes to that possible, three twenty-five Worcester Road.
Which is the whole.
Yes.
All of the subdivision, right?
All right, okay.
Yeah. Right. Which is now one or four lots.
What says number last?
I know you're in a little bit, but. Yes, please, this is from Kurt, there's a paragraph that you put forward early on about it.
Yeah.
It might help you.
Okay.
That's good, thanks for pointing that out. Yeah, it's close. Any further development of parcels would be as. Best on them will need to be reviewed, but we're talking about all of the lots.
I agree, you know, just for wing purposes, that's all.
Thank you for sharing. Will allow it.
It's already submitted prior.
Yeah, right, exactly, believe me, I need a notebook to keep track. Submitted and. Unsubmitted, you should. I think that covers it. And you think that, so. Through the chair. Different question, is that acceptable by the owner of the property?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Owner is fully ordered, they're being built now.
Pulled this through and they've seen. Language.
Anyone have anything else? Did we beat it down, of course?
Yeah.
Just, just. You voted with the. With the alteration.
I need to quote, the public hearing still currently open, right?
No, yeah.
Okay.
The public hearing was closed.
It was closed, alright.
So, it's vacant voting on to approve or.
Do we have a motion to approve the um. The decision here for the three twenty five Worcester Road, the finished subdivision plan for ZP Battery Development Company LLC Portaway. With the uh, language added in. Like go. Item number eleven. As it pertains to any further development within the subdivision that was.
I don't know this, um, decommissioned and all that.
This is for subdivision.
It's the subdivision.
I knew that.
And there's no performance guarantee on this, right?
No, it's meant to be a public way, always to remain private.
Yeah, I make motion that we uh, approve this subdivision plan, definitive plus subdivision plan for Z battery development on uh. Three three five Worcester Road Porter's Way. Um, with a coverage added. And for number eleven to include um, any further development. Of the properties needs to come before the board to decide if it's. Worthy of redo.
Second, all those in favor?
Uh, aye.
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 Aye, Janice. Alright, next up, we got public hearing contained for ZP Battery Development Company LLC Special Permit Application to Construct Three Energy Storage Systems. AKA Larry's Way and Sturridge Drive and Road. So Dave's.
Or, yeah. Accountant. I guess really messed up his knee in a skiing accident. And uh, so one of the partners taking over, unfortunately, just the town in work. That he's also dealing with other towns in town meeting.
Yeah.
So, he hasn't, I speaking to him today, he says he. Definitely will have something for our next meeting.
May seventeen.
Opinion.
Alright.
On the application.
How we doing on, is there a set time for specific permit hearings as far as this a certain time limit?
Well, as long as the application can take, ranges. Time to continue. And we're covered.
I've been sending, and you noticed.
I, yeah, and Tom has been great with communication with us as far as ranging any continuous.
So I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing for CB Battery Development LLC Special Permit Application for Larry's Way. To uh, May seventeen?
Yep.
Correct.
May seventeen.
Alright, all those in favor?
Second, oh, you second.
All those in favor?
Uh, aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Alright, thanks Tom, have a good one. Alright, next up, Hammond Woods Fuxel Subdivision Approval Extension, uh, here we are. Again, Tommy is coming on, and I didn't see uh, this on the uh, town meeting anymore. And we all know.
Really?
What's. What situation of what we gave the applicant a deadline for. And it seems it's gonna be come and gone, unfortunately.
I spoke to Mr. Reardon, he's in Florida, so. Didn't have a computer there, so. To attend the meeting.
So also.
What he said to me.
We have an email from a resident of Hyde Road, um, he said, I would like the con-. Consideration to be made of revoking the bond and pursuing Hyde Road and Downey Lane become. Town roads been paying taxes for eight years here and unable to receive town services. Mr. Reardon is clearly not interested in completing it. We'll put that in for the record, and then we have a Graves. Uh, report as well as pictures. Um, we got it, it's, this is the tension pond when you first form on the left, it's like over the winter, a tree fell on top of the fence and. Also, if you've taken a ride through there, the asphalt has been cut at the intersection of Downey and Hyde Road. Seems like it was underground utility service, either cable or electric service had to be runs down the shoulder of the road, and Mike may noted it that. Um, of that as well as, oh, they went down the shoulder of the um. Of the grass strip between the sidewalk and the curb, and that needs to be reloomed and seeded. So there's some extra work there, yeah, correct.
What's the current bond amount?
This is still at a hundred and forty thousand along, Randy?
Yeah.
Ball talk?
Yeah.
Which I think is.
Yeah, in the, Mr. Reardon said the town authorized a cut in the road. The county doesn't have the authority to authorize cut in a private road, we have. Nothing to do with it, it's probably on an issue with their. Cable service or whatever the case is, was the town had no involvement in it.
Yeah. Yeah, right across the hallway, from one side, one curb to the night.
Right near the intersection, down the.
I, yeah.
And off the utility though. Any idea?
It was Carter's cable.
Carter did it, okay. Alright. So, and I don't know if they did the, just being familiar with doing stuff town wise, as far as cutting the road as far as all the. Highway department likes the backfill to be, and then how uh, they like to see the infrared uh, on the joint on the team, so. Unknown if that was done, and then also Mike made, Grace made a point of also some. Stuff needs to be moved from the spillways on some basins, basin one, four and five, uh, drain manhole. Appears to be driven from fall season, it needs a new casting. Um, fencing around basins one, four and five, damaged. And then um, two pre-craft structures with observed nears that need to be removed. Rise a section of concrete. So.
What's causing the damage on the basins?
Oh, wow.
This problem.
I think the contractor. Maybe the developer has something I don't know, so I guess the question is, do. No, now it isn't on.
So, we're in a big request to. For the engineer, Mike Graves engineer to give him. Uh, estimate for bond reduction. And like. Uh, Andy said we not, Jimmy has authority from the planning board to do so.
I wouldn't reject that, and because I think that we've gone through this for long enough.
Yeah.
The time is, Tom, he's, we, we, we gave him deadlines, he continues to miss that. So, so I think that we need to.
We need the money.
Yeah, we need to direct Randy to start the process for the, to pull the bond on him.
Oh, and the sign's still up.
Yeah, correct, there's a, there's a whole list. So, um. Do we need, we, we need to do a vote on that, right, Randy?
Yes, I've been also, this is also. And it, this is a legal question, and honestly, Jane brought it up today, and I didn't know, didn't know the answer to it. If. Should we extend the um, subdivision approval because. Not, not for Mr. uh, Reardon's sake, for the town's sake, so that um. Because we're gonna have to do an RFP out for approval for the work to be done, so. Keep the process legal.
Yeah.
That the board should be granting uh, an extension. To the subdivision, I mean, grant a year extension from today, hopefully. Not going with that thing to resolve by then, so we'll take its time to RFP and, you know, look at the process. They have the work done.
That was a year, the, the appropriate time, or three months. That way we can.
Well.
That way we can revoke the bond and, and.
Marley, you don't, you can revoke the bond tonight, but still grant an extension. Or. Now we're getting to a legal mire here with this, so.
That's why I'd, I'd kind of prefer to grant the extension for a shorter period of time, because we can always grant it again.
When are you doing it, May seventeen? That makes me.
But, I was gonna go a little bit further.
System can bounce it off legal.
Yeah.
Why, why do you wanna do it for um, three months, like you said, legal, since legal's out on injury? This is, this second guy in line has time to, to get to.
I'm, I'm hoping that we can get this through legal and, and get the book, the.
Yeah.
Work done prior to the, the, the uh.
Especially. At the town administration, everybody's aware of the problem, so. This isn't a recent, you know, this is. They're expecting it.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously, it's not something, it's, it's, that's something we've taken lightly, you know, we've, we've discussed it many times.
Documented it in writing a lot.
So, okay, um.
So, two months.
This is May, June, July, once our meeting in July.
We don't.
Yeah. The twelve, the twelve, July twelve.
Same the end of July. Well, we meet on the twelfth, if it's the end of July, if you want time to.
Yeah.
Uh, continue us, so. Um.
By then we should have, you know, projects together that is sent out an RFP in two, maybe even have a response.
So we're gonna need to do, I want, I'd like to, prefer to do two votes, one for. Prove the extension, another to have you start the process for pulling the bone.
Right, so is mid-July sufficient? Randy, or do you wanna go to mid-August?
Wanna go to August or July, that extension?
I think that we should go to July to keep it on the shortest, I don't explain.
Okay.
If we give it too long, then we'll then probably get an argument for that.
We know that.
Developer about, yeah, down.
We've already extended it.
Right.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we extend the Hammond Woods subdivision approval for uh, till. July fifteenth, did you say seventeen? Well, that makes it, let's make it the fifteenth. And then we can vote again on the twelfth, to, to, and it just, just, you know, but the meeting's on the twelfth, but it's extended to the fifteenth. Just in case.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Did you have a comment or question, seeing the, are you from the?
I do, yeah.
Okay, go right ahead, speak up, so we're gonna do another vote.
My name's Derek Gordon.
Okay, yeah.
Thirteen Hyde Road.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, I'm, I wanna say I'm representing everybody.
Yeah, correct, yeah, yeah.
People, okay, so. You know, I get it that you guys wanna get this solved with, we totally do too, you know, so some people in the neighborhood have been there for eight years already, okay? And one of the biggest issues, in my opinion, is uh, is the town hasn't taken over the plowing and the uh, balding sanding. I, for one, on my way to work, I've flown across. Bottom of uh, Hyde Road, across onto Hammond Hill, went into that, across the street. And probably about, at least I know about seven more people have done that, okay? The black ice, the way the water flows down there. The way the water flows down there, you can't see the, like, you can't, it's, it's very, very, very dangerous, thank God. We don't have teenage uh, vehicle operators in that neighborhood right now, but we will. And hopefully by that time, everything will be swept away, okay? Um, couple of things I wanted to bring up, you guys touched upon some of the things I wanted to bring up, am I gonna rehash that? Um, you know, uh, for, for aesthetics in the neighborhood, um, coming up in the neighborhood, we have that, uh, like a wooden sign there. That's supposed to be granite uh, sign, Hammond Hill wood sign. Um, and then on the right hand side, it's supposed to be a bunch of rip rap up there, so it looks a little, dressed it up very little. And I know the sign's available because at twelve, uh, Hyde, Hyde Road, my neighbor across the street, before he moved in, that sign was in there. So it's already been done, so I don't know what the problem is, and what, where it went, you know, why it's not up there now, I don't know what the delay is, um. Another small thing, and this is, you know, this is petty stuff compared to the stuff we've been dealing with earlier tonight, but uh, we have a mailbox there, we have plus two cluster mailbox. One was hit by one of the contractors up there, okay, it wasn't Tim's fault, I'm not gonna try to kick Tim's bag in, cause he's not here, however. Uh, it still needs to be addressed and fixed, okay, this isn't a, you know, a three-decker neighborhood in Worcester, on Main Street, you know that. This is a nice neighborhood, it's respectful neighborhood, everybody works hard, everybody pays taxes, um, and I think we all uh. Should be afforded that, um. Afford that everything has, gets fixed, because it's been a while, I've been there for five years. And unfortunately, and, you know, I don't know who needs to hold Tim accountable to get this stuff done before he turns into town. Or the town's gonna take it over before it's done, and you guys are gonna take it over, I don't know, but either way, it needs to be addressed, um. Uh, especially the, 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 the snow, the, the, the silver move, that's huge. Uh, gentleman at the bottom of the street, uh, I'm not gonna mention his name, he does the majority of the plowing up there, on his own dime, at his own expense. He's, he's a great neighbor, and, cause he knows, cause it goes right into his house, okay, so. And there's been, like I said, at least I know of seven people that have gone across there, not good. Okay, um, you know. A numerous, uh, so the, uh, the trees that were supposed to be, that were planted in a neighborhood. Okay, they were, they came extremely late fall, I wanna say even snowed, like the day before, two days before, or two days after. That's how late in the season was they planted it, there's at least probably, I'll be conservative, fifteen, twenty trees that are dead. I don't know if an arborist needs to go up there, if there's like a bug problem, the tree ward and dead of videos.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Yeah, and tree ward, request him to go up there, and he actually gave us a week forward.
Water in your.
That's speaking.
Part of the uh. The bond process, you know, those trees, if they need to replace anything.
Right.
They will be taken out of the, money that's allocated for the bond.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, our tree ward, the town tree ward did.
Right, I didn't know if that, I didn't know if that was addressed.
Stay on target.
Okay, yeah. You know, and again, just uh, speaking for the, we just feel like that the cam keeps getting kicked down the road, that's all, I mean, you know, I'm not trying to put the blame on anybody. Somebody, you know, somebody needs to be held accountable for, for all the stuff that's going on, I mean, it should have been wrapped up. Fifty, fifty percent of the house is supposed to be built, it's supposed to be turned over to the town, well, it's hundred percent now, and. It was still fighting, not fighting, but was still like, when's the stuff gonna get done, you know what I mean? The retention ponds also, uh, I don't know if you have it, obviously the uh, tree fell on uh, one of the fences. One of the other gates does not work, it was destroyed by whoever was working in there, cutting down whatever, so you can't lock that at all, or at least put the latch down, whatever, just so everybody knows.
Yeah.
Um. I think that's, I think that's about it, that, that covers, that pretty much covers it.
I wonder why you're four.
And uh, just keeps on pushing. Deadlines, like the deadline we had with sperm to half a timey, and that was it, and he hasn't met that, so.
Right.
This is where the buck stops, so.
Okay, cool, but that's, that's, that's kind of what we're all asking for, just like, enough, so, alright, we get it.
Yeah.
That's what we're representing.
Yeah, thank you.
What's that?
I know you've all been very.
Oh, yeah, yeah, alright, appreciate it.
Yeah, yes. Alright, we have a motion to direct trade to get the stop the process to pull the bond on Hammond Woods subdivision.
Make a motion to the process, Randy revoking the bond on Hammond, Hammond Woods subdivision. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Janice. Alright, next up, we have East N LLC one sixty six Worcester Road, site plan, field modification, we have a, a letter here from Graves.
We, 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 the applicant um, has requested, a lot of cars that. Vehicles that leave the property, they have pulled out onto Route twenty, and then back on the old Richard Road.
Oh, sure.
Uh, LC, Bill Christian, and uh. So they, you question approaching. So they, we question approaching another driveway, just keep people from, pull out on the twenty, go around the corner and then. Get off the road again. You know, we have straight car rate on Dell Stevens Road. I sent to Mike Andrews for his review, and he feels this could be done as a field change. Um, so, but the boys are supposed to vote on approving the field change. One driveway is highlighted, and that's a lot of big dirt. And the road, so it's a building, it's a driveway that's out close to the Witsch Road.
Yeah.
It's the one.
Now, you previously had a curb cut on L Stevens, and the old one goes through the new detention, detention area.
That's a, uh, uh, plan that was approved, the detention area is further towards the building, so this driveway won't be going over it.
Yeah, but the old one, a previous.
The previous driveway, yeah, is blocked by the bio from. Okay. So we had access there closer to the intersection of Route twenty, so this one's actually safer.
Okay.
Um, I submitted that same plan to the driver, to the highway supervisor, then for a driveway permit, and he's approved it, I'm just waiting for this field change to pick it up.
Okay.
Jayden Boy said to submit stormwater accounts to Mike Andrews, and that's what he based on his decision on.
Is this also, we're gonna do those ones?
Yes. Did the bio retention area change? So what were the calculations for just for the new driveway? To make sure that there was enough there to cover the new asphalt. Yeah, it's probably gonna be twelve feet by fifty feet, and it's not a huge surface area. And the conclusion was the bio retention is bigger than. It fits within the previous calculation.
All right, we have a motion to approve the, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, site plan field modifications for East End, that one sixty-six, Mr. Wood. Very second.
All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I. I.
All right, next up, we got Blue Water Management Group LLC, fifty-three Sturbridge Road Site Plan Field Modification, we also have a. Letter here from Graves Engineering. And, uh, it's about an earthen burn.
Is that, they had a, on the original site, when they had a, uh. A sound wall, a sound barrier wall on the Heath and Hill. Road side of the property, um, as a result, once they started grading everything, they found out that they could. Uh, accomplish the same. Process, right, you'd be early in Birmingham, be grading the property, um, they submitted a. Those changes, kind of, Andrew for his review, and he felt the, um. Angel, to this, or the burn would accomplish the same thing as proposing a. Wheels, sound barrier wall.
Uh, so I've, I've seen the area and Mr. Blackwell's, what, nice enough to give me a tour of the facility, in fact, the burn. Will be, uh, earthen, which I think is better, so.
Yeah.
Retention capabilities than opposed to the wall of wood, so, and it's not visible from any. Locations other than maybe right underneath it and through the.
Another question from the board on this field change, any questions, the engineer or anything? All right, we have a motion to approve the, uh, field change at fifty-three Sturridge Road for Earthen Burn.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the field change for fifty-three Sturridge Road. Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
Bye.
Bye. All right, thank you very much.
Board for your time.
Next up, we have a match, and match on the launch at the sixty-one A, possible release request for Laterno, fifty-five Freeman Road. I got a letter here, uh, to whom it may concern, Andrew, Patricia, Lieutenant fifty-five, Freeman Road, Choppin Masswood. Will be gifting our son Andrew Laterno Junior, five acres of land, including four, to build a single-family house. We want to take all of our land out of six-one A, we have a total of twelve point two nine acres, the barn, fields, and horseley part of. The gifted land, all of the land will stay as it is, the land has been subdivided by jobs engineering, perfected by. When engineering and passed by the Board of Health, the land has been approved by the zoning board. The shared driveway has been approved by the planning board, and the permit has been issued by the Highway Department. We're currently awaiting on the building permit. So we got the.
Yeah, what actually happened, the, the planning board had approved the property, we divided it into, we was two lines.
Yeah.
And on the. With common driveway, and, and, yeah, it's, that's the time. It, it was submitted to the planning board, they said the property was mine, it's a G one A, it's had, we've done it first, but. So, then it became, became an issue at the time of the building, the application, so. This is, this is basically correcting what has already been, the planning board has already approved this, but. They still have to get, make the recommendations to, uh, not have the property. Watch out, not for the property.
All right. Do we have a motion to, um, next one, recognition, not the, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, right, right, right. I make a motion that the, uh, town does not exercise its right to, uh, modify the property from the sixty-one A. Decline, declining by the owner. All right, with a freedom of property.
Run a second. All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I. I.
It was a very unusual A and R. And we had a, a lot, a lot of questions, uh, the zoning officer and I. About the property, the, uh, property owners supplied a bunch of information to us to show that, um. It was illegal property, they could, um, be sold, here, I'll get one more copy there. Well, what you made you said, unusual, some beach road, which is a private road. What, um, basically. A and R is. Having this frontage on. Metal pond, this rectangular strip from this property and being purchased by another property owner. Um, it's, it's marked as it will not be a buildable lot, which obviously can't be. And, you know, we had concerns because it's to the center line of Beach Road, which is a private road. But we did receive the legal information from their attorney that. Everybody on Beach Road has the right to pass or repass, and so the purchase of this property is not going to. Impact anybody that uses that road.
So it's going to be part of this land, or it's being taken off of?
It's being taken off that land.
Somebody wants a dock.
Well, that's the only thing we could figure.
They needed.
That's what I.
Needed some water pump to put a dock.
Yeah, that's, that's what I figured, something like that.
Yeah, they asked the property, they go, where they know you can buy the land, they strip the land from their law, you know.
Owner of the. But the owner. Is not the applicant. The applicants, the purchasers, purchaser of the new property. Shall we apply that's triple, not a building. So. Right on, that's.
Road comes right down next to the water, and that's the area.
So Sharon owns that property now, and they're selling it to, who's the? Okay.
Yeah.
No motion to approve these, but, any other questions?
They own this piece here, which is now part of this, so this is all part of this piece here, is breaking this off. To go to.
Obviously, issues that'd be the part of the property I'm going to keep, but.
Yeah.
I'll see her, yeah, where's Shelley? So we hoping?
I was wondering, I was wondering if she might own this lot or this lot, you know, on one, one of the side. Yeah, I, I figured it had to be nearby, you know, their town, which would have docked in or whatever.
I create a motion to approve the A and R.
Well, I don't know how much.
I'll second, all those in favor?
I.
I. I.
I. Were the most expensive sale of property in town.
We do one, one paper and one other?
Yes, yes. Or stop, Andy?
This, oh.
Tomorrow, we have the elements.
Oh, yes, that's true.
Good, I haven't seen a real plan, so.
I saw one real nice picture, it's like, what it is, and what the post is overlaid over it. And I cannot find it again.
Yeah, you gotta follow the telephone calls.
Yeah, right, and no one's.
Well, yeah, but I mean, this was all nice, it was a drawing, and I'm trying to. Yeah, yeah.
It was around somewhere, I thought it was on the town page.
Thursday, May fourth, six o'clock, live virtual public information meeting for the, uh, Route twenty reconstruction project in town, as well as in Oxford.
So. So that's it, kind of, for your information, if you're really interested. There, as, as anybody knows, they're going east on twenty, they've started, so.
Yeah.
They expect to take, I think, approximately four years to complete.
They cleared the trees pretty quick.
They did.
Got those holes up pretty quick too, I'm very surprised.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Old, usually.
That last, are you waiting?
And somehow.
Particularly when.
Okay.
I thought they took off, they were took the front of that building off. And they're moving that into section all in front of this old Shell Station.
Yes, they're taking it unmasking it.
I thought it was gonna be cut more into the, the banking.
Yeah, I, I'm surprised it went that way versus the other way, I mean.
Some guy has a, a pole right, like, five feet from his house there. Right across some.
Right.
Yes, all of those houses down in Oxford, and they're gonna, like, come up their front door and the road.
All right, Randy, you have anything else? We have any other business that I'm going to have a posting? All right, does anyone have anything else that's come up over the past month or so?
May I, the, the only other issue is this, this major issue we heard tonight.
Yeah.
Just to put it on the table, like, the sequence of events here seems to be a little wrong, they got all the way through the process of paying for. A very serious site plan design, submitting it to the planning board, first time we're hearing about it, and then we're surprising them. With, uh, a different answer. Did, did somebody miss that, um, concrete manufacturing is in heavy industrial?
They, they spoke to the zoning officer.
The sequence of events here may be, uh, out of order, so we, we need to do a better job.
Zoning enforcement is one who makes the determination as far as that, that's his.
Use?
No, his job, yeah.
But when it's in black and white?
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's, it's right there, it's, it's clear, well, let's, let's.
Third party, that's we're throwing, that's why I wanted to get, have a legal analysis, look at it, just take it off the table.
And, and I think just to bring it up to the higher level, to the next one that comes along, it's like, uh, we should. If they're going to, before Randy or Kurt, just come in with the, a PowerPoint presentation of what, what they're doing.
Yeah.
Future, like, just suggesting a new process, like, you can't wait for this. That's, to me, it seemed like creative permitting. Um, be careful how you write it down on the permit, write it down as, as earth processing, not concrete manufacturing.
One, one application I can compare it to would be the Rainforet.
Yes, yeah, I mean.
There was a difference of opinion by the planning board, there's a difference of opinion by the, uh, zoning personnel, the applicant. And it, it proved that the zoning personnel was correct and, and.
And that one, I'll have to admit, it didn't turn out to be as ugly as.
No, they did a very good job, you know, and so I think as we, as we were going through the meeting tonight, that, that kind of popped into my mind. As far as how the opinions were, as far as when the information was given, how the board is processing it, and the feedback going back and forth. And that's kind of what popped into my head, so, but we'll see what Leah has for an opinion as far as that, but I know, like, from. Anyone, when you think about, I come from outside of town, all right, who's gonna make the determination, the book, what's right or wrong, this, this is, he has to tell for a reason. Needs his to.
So, i- if it is allowed by right, it needs just planning board review. Um, but the planning board can also require. Other mitigation factors, um, traffic surveys, we can do sound, I mean, this, this things, this is adding. Traffic to that seat, the, the, what, what would it mean with that C V S lot? I mean, now you're running heavy equipment through a parking lot of an existing building.
And it's very close to their drive-up or the prescriptions.
And taking that corner around that light to get them out of there.
That's why, that's why I asked, that's gonna be the only main entrance.
Even if it's allowed, so we can, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
But ju- just for process-wise, for the next one that comes along, so who does make the determination?
Did they come to you?
The CEO does.
I mean, that's where.
Okay, we could, you had an E B C meeting tonight, right?
Uh, it was postponed.
But has this project come before you?
It had not.
They didn't, okay.
Yeah, it had not, so, the first time I've heard of it, I heard, uh, rumors of it, but not anything more than that. But the E B C, we've been talking about it as I brought up, you know, real estate, the governor, and so, and they were confused, like, what's the process? How long was this discussed, how long, how long has it been in discussion?
Uh, I don't know, it's.
With, with. The, in zoning enforcement, in the planning.
Well, I don't know how, when he brought it up to Kurt, it had been. Well, I don't know how, when he brought it up to Kurt, it had been a few months.
Well, this is what, April fifth.
Perhaps, perhaps when he gets an application. Before he acts on it. And that's what. He comes and presents us, and we can say, hey, there are concerns, even before it gets to the plan. I know it's his job or anything.
Yeah.
But that's, but it's God sometimes, if it's, if, and I. He just would come in, the next meeting, we're coming to next meeting, I have this proposal. This is the reading in it. We're gonna, and then we voice his concerns, we have a discussion, then he can at least let the applicant know. That, you know, I, you know, we have preliminary talk with the planning board, and there's, they have concerns about your project. And then they will make the determination if they want to proceed with it.
Either that or it goes over to ZBA.
No?
You can't go to ZBA for use.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, alrighty.
All it is, is just a little communication. That's all that.
Yeah, well, because we've said things, well, you better go pop the curtain about his use.
Yeah, and we always said affirm to him. But it seems like when it comes to him. And I, which is his job, which is Ross's point and everything, but. It, it wouldn't take, what, what's the process? I mean, it's usually. It's, it's no less than two weeks.
Yeah.
Before they, it's like, yeah, I'm just gonna run it to, run it up to the flagpole and see if. You know, you have elected, so we're different than Kurt, Kurt than employee. We're elected by the town. And so it's just two, it's. Church and state getting together and saying, hey, this is the way I want to do. And not to blow anybody's sails or anything, it's just. Let's just work together.
And this is over a month that the application was made, so I'm sure they talked to Kurt before the application was made.
It, it would have been nice to get a little.
Little heads up?
Yeah. Little heads up, it just, I, I, the first I heard about it was when I read the agenda. So. Alright.
Just bring it up as a nation.
Yeah, we're gonna make it so easy for people, and then we just got slapped in the head.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, they spent a lot of time.
Uh, the um, the. Town council or our council want to have, they join me with the uh. Um, planning board and the board of selection, uh, they reached the agreement, it's already been approved by everyone. The B G G, so they want to have an executive session. June twelve. For a joint executive. Session with the board of select.
That's our next meeting.
Oh, that's our next, yeah, that's, yeah, okay. That's the June meeting?
The first June meeting. No.
Yeah.
At least it's. Board of Selectments meeting, maybe.
Oh.
All the boards, yeah, it's not our board.
No, not our, it's the board of selecting.
June what?
June fourteenth is our next meeting, June twelfth is a Monday.
Yeah, June twelfth is a Monday.
But they mean, I do say though.
We're doing this meeting on the twelfth, their meeting the thirteenth, we're meeting.
But I'll verify that day. I thought they said, that's true, well, but. If somebody could have misspoken, they didn't, you know, they were day off.
Well, it's good they got, they finally want to. That would seem like his concern is that they wanted to drag it on a little.
Well, he said that he was gonna have an answer, like in two days, and that was.
Yeah.
Was it Dave that got hurt? Okay.
Skiing actually, yeah. I guess you just.
Snow skiing or water skiing, let's get this.
What's that?
Snow skiing or water skiing?
That's too bad.
Alright, does anyone have anything else?
Was it three in low? Motion to adjourn?
Is he okay? I guess that's the question. Is, is he okay?
He's got, I guess, to have a little bit of like reconstructive. These ways, they messed it up pretty good.
Maybe a tree wasn't there.
We have a second on a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I was in favor?
I.
Aye.
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 Aye.